And get this committee of the whole meeting started. Don't be fooled by the four item agenda, it will be a long night. First item we have on the agenda, we have Xavier University student comments slash project. So I don't know who, who wants to?
Just pick up where we left off?
Mark's main.
Preamble, just in case somebody tuned in.
Yes, please.
For committee of the whole. So back in August, right around the beginning of Xavier University's fall semester, this group of Poly 110 students came focused on civic government and at the time they heard an address, excuse me, they were here for one of the public hearings back in August. And throughout the course of the semester, they've been engaged with different organizations and people in the community, including myself, Safety Service Director Noah Powers, Mike Skelly, and other nonprofit groups. And their class project is essentially culmination, instead of taking like a final exam, correct me if I'm wrong, Katie, they are. Oh, they're still a final, okay, well, their final project anyway.
Nice try.
Can't legislate Dr. Robidek's class, but the, one of their final projects is to actually show up and put together all the pieces and parts of what they've been learning and what they've been studying all semester to speak on an issue related to municipal government. So the housing committee meeting earlier heard four of the students and then speaking about housing issues, and then there are some additional students, additional topics to cover hereafter. So welcome back our Xavier University guests.
Thank you. My name's Kyla Feckler, I'm a sophomore at Xavier and I'm speaking today because Norwood residents deserve accurate information and transparency regarding housing and environmental health risks. According to the Ohio EPA, Hamilton County has some of the highest childhood blood level, lead levels in Ohio and the highest air pollution levels in the state, about one and a half times the national average. Norwood's older housing in proximity to major roadways mean our community is especially vulnerable when it comes to toxic exposure, yet there is no detailed neighborhood level reporting available to residents. Our water reports technically meet EPA limits, but they are consistently borderline. Residents are not being told what contaminants are present, how close we are to violation markers, or how families and individuals can protect themselves against the toxic environment. The city provides no clear plan or timeline for water safety improvements. The Norwood 2023 Health Needs Assessment, which is the most recent, used only 156 respondents, which were almost all white, female, and privately insured. This excludes many of the people most likely to be impacted by environmental and housing risks, which include black residents, men, renters, and low-income families. Without representative data, an effective or equitable community health improvement plan is out of reach. The problem isn't just pollution or aging housing, it's that the data we are using to assess these risks is incomplete and unrepresentative. If the information is flawed, then the policies built on that information will be flawed and ineffective. I would urge the council to require more transparent water and air quality reporting, including contaminant explanations with clear language, prioritize a more representative health needs assessment, and expand public communication on lead risks and remediation in older housing. Norwood residents want to protect their communities, but we can't do that without accurate accessible information. I urge the council to make environmental health transparency a priority. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Courtney Brower and I'm a student at Xavier University who has been researching public safety challenges here in Norwood. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. Over the past few months, I've studied how Norwood's emergency services operate. One thing became very clear, our first responders work incredibly hard for the city of this size. This year alone, from January through late October, the Norwood Police Department responded to over 19,700 calls for service. That is a very high call volume for a 3.1 square community. Many of these calls involve complex issues such as retail theft, addiction, mental health crises, homelessness, and unsafe housing conditions. And despite this workload, Norwood continues to maintain very low violent crime rates, including zero homicides this year. But the main challenge facing the department isn't crime, it's funding. Much of their essential equipment like patrol vehicles, radios, and communication systems is outdated. Because the city can't afford to replace everything at once, upgrades are spread out to over many years and often depend on competitive grants. Those grants help, but they are unpredictable and not enough to keep the pace with the rising call volume and modern communication needs. This funding gap directly affects response time, officer safety, and the overall efficiency for emergency services. When housing conditions decline, when families are displaced, or when individuals experiencing homelessness are in crisis, first responders are the ones who show up every time. Tonight, I'd like to offer some suggestions for strengthening public safety through more stable funding. First, work toward a dedicated reliable funding stream for equipment upgrades, especially communication systems and patrol vehicles that have a direct impact on the safety and response times. And secondly, strengthen the city's coordinated approach to securing county, state, and federal grant funding so Norwood can capture more available resources without overburdening emergency staff. Norwood's first responders and personnel demonstrate incredible commitment to this community every day. They deserve updated tools and dependable funding that reflect the importance of the work they do. Thank you for your time and everything you do to support the safety and well-being of our residents.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Renanato. I'm a student at Xavier University studying liberal arts and political science. So I'm gonna speak, talk about the PRK project that is a major infrastructure project in Norwood that being proposed by the PRK involving rural improvement and commercial development. And it sparked controversy because the council voted against the project citing that it failed to meet proper construction requirement and community needs. And from my meeting with one of Norwood's Together representatives, the project will take over the houses of people in the neighborhood. For fact, it will be, they will be losing their childhood houses and the project may cause prices to go up too high on things. The PRK company bought a house just to make an opening for the firefighter to have a next seat and an entrance. Besides that, the Montgomery Road corridor already busy face added strain from construction and redevelopment plans. So I suggest actionable solution that we recommend will be to strengthen community engagement in infrastructure planning, clarify veto override procedure to ensure democratic accountability, and align local project with both economic goal and resident priorities. Thank you, council member and the audience. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name's Ella Thiel. I'm from Lexington, Kentucky, and today I'd like to talk about an issue that deeply affects the well-being of the community here in Norwood, property crime. Currently, there is a rising impact of property crime in the area and it is something that needs to be addressed. Despite its strong community identity, Norwood does face crime rates that are significantly higher than both state and national averages of populations this size. Property crimes like theft, burglary, motor vehicle theft are the most pressing concerns, with 1 in 30 residents of Norwood here facing, face experiencing a property crime each year. In addition to that, countless motor vehicle crimes have been reported on Xavier's campus in the last few months as well. Adding extra lights and cameras in residential areas could be extremely helpful with vehicle theft or people breaking into cars. Increasing patrols through the areas so people know they're being watched or protected, if Norwood PD would implement something of the sort, we would see decreases in the types of property crime, just as XUPD did after these car break-ins. One of the most important takeaways I found in my research is that Norwood's local government, that if Norwood's local government starts to focus on strengthening community police partnerships and also expanding local surveillance, you all can help significantly reduce property crime here. Just as importantly, many residents support increasing funding for youth programs, mental health services, and addiction resources, proactive strategies that address the root causes of these issues rather than reacting after the fact. So we can prevent our youth from falling down the wrong path. We need to offer more programs that offer ways to help kids who feel the need to start stealing or committing other types of crimes. If Norwood starts, if Norwood starts to offer more youth outreach programs and community building groups, it will greatly reduce the parts of these crimes that are committed by the youth in this area. Overall, expanding after-school programs, strengthening community and local partnerships, improving mental health service access, and offering police training focused on community interaction, Norwood can take meaningful steps towards the long-term safety concerning property crimes. Thank you.
Hello, I am Max Ravik. Third-year student at Xavier University, today I'm going to be talking about sidewalks. I've lived at Xavier for a year and I'm a DoorDash driver in the area, so I spend a lot of time driving through Norwood and interacting with local restaurants around the area. So I've driven through many streets of Norwood and something I have noted is that there are a few sidewalks with varying quality. However, this does not prevent people from walking, it only makes it unsafe and difficult. 3.4% of Norwood residents are walking as their main source of transport and so infrastructure needs to be bettered to accommodate that. These are members of our community who have no choice but to walk across closed-off crosswalks and through traffic, or to walk into street in order to make to the grocery store. I've seen women, children, the elderly, and the disabled walk across busy Montgomery Road and through the crowded parking lot of Shury Square. For many people, there's no other option and our city needs to reflect that. Pedestrian-friendly, walkable sidewalks should be in place, not just on Montgomery Road, but throughout the city, in front of houses, storefronts, gas stations, and bus stops. I don't think I need to argue that this would be a good thing to implement. I'm sure it's on a wish list somewhere in a file cabinet in City Hall. However, I understand money is the main factor. And talked with Ms. Mary C. Miller, President of Norwood Together, we spoke about this issue and she largely agreed with me. So I'd like to posit the economic benefits that would come from a large-scale sidewalk program. My research on sidewalk impacts, I found that according to AARP and CivicWorld.org, sidewalks can create economic returns in resale value, raising property value, and bringing in more income through foot traffic. In short, it would serve as a long-term investment, both benefiting the city as well as improving the economic state of Norwood. For example, the median property value in West Palm Beach nearly doubled from 1993 to 1998 with the incorporation of sidewalks. So in time, this could pay itself off and even profit. Outside of economic benefits, it would provide for a safer, more accessible town for those in our community who need it. Sidewalk implementation should be at the top of our list for improving Norwood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hello, everyone. My name is Clara Solentrop and I'm from St. Louis, Missouri, and I'm a freshman at Xavier. Since September, I have been researching education in Norwood and how to better it, especially in the case of funding. Even though I did not attend grade school in Norwood, I come from a family of educators and I'm a primary education double major myself, so education is a topic I am extremely passionate about. Funding for the schools is crucial because if the schools are not funded properly, teachers lose their jobs, classrooms merge, extracurriculars are cut, and crucial corners are cut that should not be that affect the students enrolled in the schools. Due to the Factory 52 development, Norwood's schools are losing funding and that is a fact. Norwood's schools are meant to receive $6,000 per student that is enrolled, but due to the tax abatements that have come from Factory 52, they now only receive $870. Coupled with laws that are being passed at the state and national level that reduce the funding Norwood's schools receive from the state, it is hard to make this ground up. Because of Factory 52 and the developers applying for CRAs, the developers are tax abated for 15 to 30 years with no property taxes. Property taxes are the majority of the funding for the schools, so that is 15 to 30 years with a major loss in funding. I understand that building and developing is important to Norwood and I respect that, but I urge city council to work in the best interest of the schools and their funding. Buildings should not be constructed in contradiction to the school and in a way that directly takes funding from the schools. I am here today to ask city council to please prioritize the schools in the future when building for Norwood and to keep in mind how detrimental these tax abatements can be for those involved with the schools. Because it is not just the residents being affected, but the young students who are dependent on a quality education to serve as a building block for the rest of their lives and their future in Norwood. Thank you all for your time.
Good evening. My name is Nixia Najadi. I'm a Cincinnati native, I grew up right next door in Madeira, I still live there. Spent the last six years serving in the Army and now I'm home and student at Xavier. And my goal is to address the PUD development on South Robertson. And my goal is to address the PUD development on South Robertson. Everyone's talking about it. Everyone understands the complaints, the, you know, whatever. I wanted to kind of zero in on what I thought were the core issues, like how did this happen? Right? So number one, I think it's a lack of education on it. As I studied it and found different articles from Cincinnati Courier and the Inquirer, I largely agree with PL, I'm on their side. PLK did the best they could, you know, with what was given, you know? I think that the lack of information on the Norwood City website is very trouble, right? The website looks like, you know, out of the Jason Bourne movie. It looks like a 1990s DoD website. So my request for you guys is to take full advantage of Xavier University, please, you know? There's 1,000 computer science majors that are willing and able to intern and work on this kind of stuff for you guys for little or no money. And I know that you guys are in, you know, works with the school to have like, you know, get together and kind of see what we can do, and I implore you to take full advantage of it. The second and more important issue is the problem with the zoning code. It's completely outdated. Most of the zoning code is the remnants of the exclusionary zoning practices of the 80s, you know? Most of the zoning code was written in 83 and last updated in '03. So what I suggest is an automatic review process. Any codes over 25 years old should be reviewed by the Safety Service Director, and so my ask for you guys is to, as legislators, come up with something to implement an automatic review process. You know, at the end of the day, we're all people, and I know right now the onus is on you guys to be proactive and like, you know, look into the code and make changes like where you see, but that's tough to do as people, you know? So an automatic review process, I think, would be greatly helpful, and I think that it is a, something that we need to look into. And yeah, I don't think there's a point in complaining without suggesting solutions, so those are mine for you guys, and I implore you guys to take on this line of thinking and be more proactive rather than reactive. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Holly, and I'm currently a first-year political science major at Xavier University. While I'm not a resident of Norwood, I was born and raised in Cincinnati, and aside from the seven years I spent serving in the Army in an active-duty role, I've had the privilege to call Cincinnati my home for 20 years, and I've also raised my two children here. I've personally seen a lot of changes in many of our communities, but none more important to the citizens of Norwood than the Factory 52 project, which I'm sure we're all excited to hear more about. The idea of growth and development in this community is exciting, especially when we see such a large vacant site, the old US plane card factory, being modernized into housing, shops, restaurants, et cetera. I recently met with representatives from PLK to discuss this project as well as affordable housing, and the response I received from them was that affordable housing means units prized for people making about 80% of the area median income. And although they did not have much experience building housing for lower-income families, they're always looking for opportunities. You've allowed this developer and this project to become a community authority where they can charge an additional tax on customers and residents that only benefits the project and not the surrounding community in a direct manner. Meanwhile, almost 20% of your city, close to 4,000 residents, it's taken from the 2023 census total of 19,023 residents, has been identified as living in poverty, which is above the national average of around 15%. That's from the 2023 census total. To my understanding, the contract was approved, and the project will continue on. However, the city needs to recognize its responsibility moving forward to commit itself to ensuring that there are enough affordable housing options for Norwood families. I ask that you consider tying any future tax breaks that PLK might receive to affordable housing. If the city gives financial incentives, it should require some units to be affordable. I also ask that the city consider building a long-term housing plan focusing more on the stability of future generations and less on a temporary entertainment center in an area that you may soon price your own residents out of. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you'll consider the needs of your residents above the wants of for-profit developers. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brody Maholick. I'm a freshman PPP and psychology student at Xavier University, and what I came here to talk about is harm reduction. So overall, Norwood does a very good job of harm reduction compared to a lot of other cities. You guys have Project Dawn implemented by the Hamilton County Harm Reduction Service, but the biggest issue I identified was there's no promotion or education of the service. So Project Dawn provides Narcan, needles, and CPR as long as training to use all those items, and this allows for people to use drugs safely, and if an incident does occur, they are safe. And the biggest issue is while you do all of that, there's no promotion. I did not know about this until I did my interview while researching the topic. So I, what I came here to ask is more promotion of the services you guys already employ, and then if you are to expand those services, things like needle drop-offs and prescription drop-offs that are public and not ran by a private company similar to what Seattle does, is a great source of providing those and making sure they don't end up on the streets where people are now using contaminated needles or selling prescriptions are always a great resource to have. Thank you for your time. Great talking to you.
Good evening, council. My name is Luke Schwartz, and I'm currently a senior at Xavier University and a native Cincinnatian. Over the past few weeks, I've had the opportunity to review the ongoing PLK development, as it's been discussed a lot so far. And I have some concerns that I wish to share today. First, the lack of information available from the city, especially on the website, is a major concern for me. 61% of American adults visit government websites, and the lack of information about this development on the Norwood website can lead to miscommunications for residents who live here. I'm not a resident of Norwood, but if I did live here, I would want my place of residence to give me all available information that can affect my area's conditions. There is literally one singular sentence on the PLK development in a very long document that is one thing available from the city. I believe people have a right to know all information from the city about what aspects they are, what you're planning, not just from the developer, not just from third-party sources like, you know, Fox 19 or Cincinnati Inquirer, which unfortunately has been the most common thing I've seen with this case. For example, the city I live in, Delhite, I mean, they, they publish exactly what they're planning in their documents, including studies and information about singular parts of the development, not just in general, which Norwood does not post. Keeping the population informed so there's no confusion, I think, is the key to stopping major problems before they begin. I was able to discuss this matter with a representative from the Center for Local Government, and he agreed with me, and I was able to come up with some solutions for this problem. So firstly, completely overhauling the Norwood website immediately with current project information on major developments now and in the future will prevent instances of misunderstanding and allow people to access news about the projects very easily. Adding all information directly on the website would immediately make an impact. Norwood also has a quarterly newsletter. I suggest transforming that into a monthly one to allow people to have access to current updates that aren't happening every three months. You know, a lot happens in between there. I understand that, but having something quicker every month that developments occur could easily inform people better. So I implore the council to act on solutions like these to help the residents of Norwood to stay more informed and help keep Norwood a great place to live, work, and go to school. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Ben Jenkins, and I'm a first-year philosophy, politics, and the public major at Xavier University. I'm also an intern and a writer for the Xavier Newswire. I believe a partnership between the city of Norwood and the Newswire could be very beneficial to both sides. So over the last few months for this project, I've been looking into the lack of local news throughout Norwood and all of Ohio, and it's become very clear that it's a very real issue. According to a report by the Federal Communication Commission, local news is the best way to confront major issues and have residents have the ability to solve problems in their community. News is a crucial pillar of democracy, and without it, a government can't run effectively. And we've seen that with the Factory 52 process. I mean, we've heard it from a lot of people tonight. Residents don't, they claim they don't know what's going on, and if someone doesn't know what's going on, they don't know how that can help them. So Factory 52 could be very beneficial, but if they don't know how, it's going to benefit them. It's going to be hard to get it done. So the decline of local news, it's been steeped throughout the entire country. What we're experiencing here in Norwood isn't an isolated issue; it's part of a much larger statewide and national trend. According to a study done by Indiana University, there's been a 75% decline in local news coverage since 2002. In another study done by the Local News Initiative of Northwestern University, there's been more than 2,800 newspaper closures since 2005. So this has been found to affect communities, especially the size of Norwood, smaller towns. And although Norwood has been hit by the news desert epidemic, it has the advantage of having a great college newspaper in town. I believe the Newswire could be a solution to the problem in Norwood. Newswire already has a local news section, and with some communication between the city and the Newswire, this could be shifted to cover more of Norwood specifically. Writers from the Newswire could come out to city council meetings or other major city events, and they could cover what's being discussed. And information that is being discussed that maybe we can't get writers out to just needs to be relayed to the Newswire and we can get articles out about it, and then that way the citizens are informed of what's going on in the city. And I believe that there wouldn't really even need to be much monetary backing for this, because it would be great for the Newswire to have more Norwood citizens reading, and it'd be great for the city to have what they're doing being put on display for everybody in Norwood, not behind a paywall. So Norwood's citizens deserve to be informed, and a potential partnership between the city and the Newswire could help ensure residents have the reliable, accessible information they need.
Hello, my name is Emily Simpson. I'm a freshman philosophy, politics, and the public and international studies student at Xavier, and I'm from the Memphis area. My parents are originally from the area, so I've spent countless trips up here throughout my childhood. The issue I'm going to talk about is affordable housing, which I'm sure you are all familiar with. With housing prices constantly rising and millions of renters spending more than 30% of their income on housing, demand for affordable housing is a widespread issue across the country. One contributing issue in Norwood is that zoning does not permit accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, that allow for secondary housing units on the same law as primary single-family residences, making them naturally smaller and more affordable. They have been successful in increasing the number of units without the need for large-scale land development in many cities around the country. There has also been an increased interest in an Ohio Senate amendment proposal to give local communities that choice to implement land value taxation, or LVTs. I urge Norwood to support this legislation as it could serve as a useful tool to encourage further developments. LVT taxes land at a higher rate than buildings, giving owners incentive to develop vacant and underused lots. Additionally, it can be difficult to get incentives for developers at a higher government level. However, local funding, tax abatements, and inclusionary zoning can be used to develop, to require developers to set aside affordable units in new developments. I know this isn't an easy issue to find a solution to, but by taking small steps, I think we can eventually get there. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Mac Mariani. I'm a professor at Xavier University. I wanted to just thank the council and the city of Norwood for, one, just being a good neighbor, and, you know, I think this is, you know, our students, well, many of our students live in Norwood, a good majority of them, you know, shop and enjoy entertainment activities in Norwood. And it's a place that's been welcoming, it's a place that's been a great partner and a great, you know, just a great neighbor. And in particular, I want to thank you for providing this opportunity for students to share their views. I know this is a long night for all of you, and one of the things that sort of we're hoping to see for the students is that they get to, they get a chance to recognize the, you know, when it comes to civic engagement and when it comes to, you know, running a city and, you know, making decisions about, about how to allocate limited resources, you know, part of what it, part of what it takes is a commitment to give up some of your personal time, some of your family time in order to listen to what people have to say, and it's an important part of what you guys do. And on behalf of Katie Rebidek, Dr. Katie Rebidek, and I, who are teaching this class, I just want to thank you for role modeling that, and, you know, any feedback that you have from, for our students' ideas, what, you know, what they got right, what they got wrong, what they, what they don't know. We'd love to, you know, hear from you about, about those things, because it's, it's an ongoing conversation, and, you know, you guys have been really welcoming, and we're just grateful for it. So thank you very much.
Questions, comments?
I just want to say a couple things. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Absolutely, democracy is not a spectator sport, and I really appreciate the folks coming in. I want to say, we hear you loud and clear about communication. That's been a frustration that we've had. I don't want to pass the buck, but I can say that council does not control the website. That's an administrative piece, and that's also something that we are continuing to work on, to improve that. Want to say in terms of affordability, and this goes back to communication, a lot of you probably don't know that a new development is going to be showing up probably in the next few weeks. Quality Insight, which is right over there, now it's a big dirt.
Beautiful gravel lot.
Gravel lot, yes.
Next to the old Frish's.
Yes, to the Frish's, yes, R.I.P. That is planned to be a senior affordable development. PLK is doing that in conjunction with a developer that just does affordability, since PLK doesn't do it, now I can't remember who was talking about that, that they didn't have experience. Yeah. So that is something I believe they're going to be starting to shovel dirt in the next few weeks, and that's going to be over 100 units for 55 and up reduced income. And I also just wanted to say, we did not pass the CRA, but that, that was not, right?
Community taxing authority.
Right, right.
The NCA.
The NCA.
Yes.
I actually was for it, but it was voted down, and I'm happy to chat with you about that. But just wanted to clear a couple of those. Oh, Sherman Oaks, actually, I just reached out. Sherman Oaks is another working, workforce housing is another level of affordability. So that's not your deeply discounted, that's more of your, you know, blue-collar working folks. And it tends to have like rental caps as opposed to you have to meet a certain income requirement. And that is going to be on Sherman, where the old Fun Factory was. I think they're dealing with some land issues, and, yeah, so that is on pause, but that's going to be another over 100 units of affordability. So just so you know, we are, we are absolutely looking at those things, and I also appreciate, I heard a lot of people say, where's the plan? And I think that's something that we are all anxious to start to create, because Norwood has been so reactive, because we've had no money to do anything. We are now coming into a space where we can actually do things, and that's a very exciting time. But we are absolutely flipping the switch from more of a reactive to a proactive, and I hope you'll start to see that in the coming months and years.
We can go to the one thing awful. That's the first thing I said when I ran for the flower. It's awful. It took me like 25 minutes to figure out where the recreation department.
It is not the worst version of the website, though. It was worse before.
It was, it was so much worse.
That is not to say it is good. I just want to make that clear.
Allegedly, it was worse.
So much worse.
I will say that when I started on council as a, I will say this was probably my, my initial red flag for being on council, and when I raised concern about the website being borderline non-navigable and there is, I mean, to this day, I was just trying to find minutes from a meeting, and for that committee or a department, whoever it was, the most recent minutes were from 2024. There was not like a single minute uploaded on our website from this year, and that's very frustrating. When I originally raised concern about the fact that our website looks like a GeoCities, the thing that I was told by people who have the authority to change that was, it's a lot better than it was, and I don't doubt that in any way, but that is actually just not a good enough answer in this situation. And so there is a lot, I would say, 99% of the things that you all brought to our attention. And so there is a lot, I would say, 99% of the things that you all brought to our attention are great topics and are things that we are actively working on, having conversations about. The unfortunate part about government is that everything moves at a snail's pace unless it doesn't, and that it moves very quickly. And those are the only two speeds that anything moves at. And unfortunately, when money is involved, it often moves at a snail's pace. But thank you all for coming and speaking. It takes a lot of time to do this research and to read a boatload of news articles and watch a boatload of meetings. And I appreciate anybody who gets invested in what's going on around them and their local government. Thank you for taking the time.
I was laughing at a couple people's comments, not because they were funny, but because I'm like, ah, yes, four years ago, we had this conversation. Not that you would know about that. But, yeah, ADUs was one thing that the Housing Committee has talked about in the past. Cincinnati does allow ADUs now.
Accessory dwelling.
Yeah, which are accessory dwelling units for those, there's way too many acronyms, frankly, too. That's another level of frustration to a lot of people, where like, okay, they have the information, but what's the CRA, what's the TIF, what does that actually mean? Like, what's an ADU? Is that good, bad? Does that mean you can put a trailer on your lot and call it an ADU? You know?
The answer's no.
The answer's no for that. But, yeah, no, it was funny, I'm like, ah, yes, they're seeing the same problems that I saw, that I'm still, we're still trying to figure out. But I appreciate hearing from you guys, especially, like, it's good to know that other people that are not us are looking at these problems and seeing the same issues that we are seeing, although, you know, there's always the frustration of like, well, we did try for that one, it didn't work, that you don't know that, you can't know that, you didn't spend 10 days watching all of the committee meetings that have happened in the last four, five, six years, so, yeah, it was good to hear, like, ah, yes, good, someone else is talking about the website, someone else is talking about ADUs, someone else is like, why don't we have these things on the website? Like, yes, it's not just me, we're not crazy.
Just want to say something, several good ideas, but the land valuation tax, that's a deep cut.
Oh, yeah. I love that deep cut. Oh, Georgism, I love Georgism.
Yeah, that's a very, very interesting topic that would change a lot, it would change how we fund schools, it would change how we do CRAs. So professors, I hope that you reward that with some very interesting feedback, because a land valuation tax would drastically change the way we do things in Norwood. So I, that is, I applaud you bringing that up.
Yeah, I was like, oh, my gosh, someone's read the same articles that I have about LVT.
And can I say, on the topic of changing how we fund schools, I'm sure that we all universally agree that the way that schools are funded via property tax is an issue, and we know that. Y'all got to talk to state legislation about that. We do that because the state has determined that that is how schools are funded. That was already deemed federally unconstitutional. The state of Ohio was told that that was an illegal way to fund public schools years ago, and has chosen not to take action on that. I agree, that's a crazy way for us to be public, to funding public schools, and we don't have the authority to change that. Obviously, we do have the authority to determine what tax abatements we give out, but it is interesting, when you work in the government at this, what is, or in the grand scheme of things, the lowest tier, how many things you have no say in, and how many things you have to do that because the state said so, or because the federal government said so, or because some judge you'll never meet said so, and you come up against things like that all the time. And you should write to your state legislature, that is like a major, major issue in the state of Ohio, it is a problem. Other states do not do it this way.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Gears. Yeah, I would just say, like, I would commend all of you for doing this project, and Dr. Mariani, Dr. Rabidek, for setting it up, because I think really, this is like the fundamental muscle here, you know, like, you can be mad online all you want about, like, national politics stuff, but like, this muscle that you're practicing here, like, is the real thing, you know, like, this is the little corner of the world that you can affect in a very tangible way through what you are practicing here. So I just want to, like, applaud you for that, and frankly, encourage you to, like, keep working that muscle, because I think what you've done over the course of this semester, and, you know, how, how someone ends up in, like, my seat or Sam's seat, is just this, right? Something's happening in your neighborhood, you pay attention to it, you research it, you go advocate for it, and then you say, darn it, I need a bigger platform to advocate for it, I'm going to run for office. Like, that's the path, right? And you guys are starting down that path tonight, through the course of this class, and so I just want to commend you and thank you for your time.
All right. Anything else? Okay. You all are free to sit through the rest of the meeting if you want. Otherwise, you are also free to go enjoy the snow-free streets.
It's about to get real exciting, we're talking about rules. Oh, man. What? Rules of council! Sorry, I can't talk about that, that's on the agenda.
All right. Next item on the agenda, Norwood City School and City Collaborative. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, so this was, as a reminder, this is the proposed, like, to school board members, to city council members, routine check-in, just to improve lines of communication, understand each other's worlds better, and, you know, try to work as collaboratively as possible moving forward. So following up on my last update at the meeting, the hope for tonight would be to identify, in a similar fashion to our committees for 26, 27, who we want to be our sort of two participants in this meeting for the upcoming year, and I think that's really the spirit of it, try to schedule our sort of meeting zero before the end of this calendar year, before there's some change in leadership with the school district. So that's, that's the preamble. I guess just my two cents would be that I have a great interest in participating in this, going back to, I think, February, March, something that I've routinely brought up and advocated that we start. And so I would be, I'd be happy to participate as one of council's representatives, but also, you know, don't want to unilaterally decide that. So I don't know what other interests exist in the room, or other thoughts?
Ms. Royce, you are exempt from this, I'm sorry.
Am I lovely?
Nice question. I've been in several of the meetings with the school board, I'm happy to continue. I'm also open if someone else would like to participate. And we do have two.
New council members.
Council members.
Council members elect. Can I ask what the interest is in doing it before the end of the year, given that we will have both council changes and school board changes?
Their.
The school board's seats won't change.
They will. But I think, I think the treasurer, Julie Camp House, is leaving, and the hopes to have her here, I don't know, there was a thought on, basically, like, talking about the structure a little bit, and just like, sort of, what are we agreeing to as we head into 2026, kind of like a pre-meeting, where Julie Camp House could also share some of her knowledge before she leaves her position, and then we come back in January, it would be kind of like the real first meeting.
Would we be open to possibly having those who are interested attending that initial meeting to see if there is that additional interest in serving?
If there are more than, if there are three or more, is that?
Well, there would have to be less than four. And technically, if it was one of the council members elect, that would not count, because they are not yet sworn in as a member of council.
But they would be able to attend a meeting as a council elect to get a lay of the land, and?
Correct. But they wouldn't count toward a quorum.
Correct.
And would we want, because I remember we were doing three council members and two school board, that was more for the, that discussion. Would that be the plan moving forward, or are we thinking two and two?
Yeah, the thought was just two and two, because it keeps it under quorum for either body, it's sort of.
Evens out.
Even, yeah.
Even, yeah, even number, that kind of thing.
I will say, I don't have, because of time constraints on my life, I do not have interest in being a participant, but what I would like is for whoever is to sit on small business. I think there is importance to have overlap there, obviously only one of them, but I think that it is important to me that we have at least one of those people participate in small business committees.
Can you just say more about that?
Can I? Do you legitimately want me to say more?
Yeah.
This seems like a little sarcastic. Not in my way.
Just to help me, like, how do you see the diagram?
If the goal moving forward is that small business committee is having a more active role in determining CRAs and TIFs and tax abatements, than having someone who has had direct discussion with the school board, sit on that committee and give insight into the school board's thoughts on that, in case, I can't imagine that someone from the school board feels like they want to be present at every single small business committee meeting, but that way, we will have someone present who can at least speak to the feedback given by this committee.
Thank you.
Would we want to tentatively say Mr. Provinz and Mr. Moore, and with like a question mark, and then as we are fleshing out the other committees, if that still works, that it works, and if not, we can adjust?
Do either of you feel, Mr. Provinz, do you feel like vehemently opposed to sitting on small business, or Mr. Moore?
Would, I would actively like to be on small business.
Oh, great. Love that. Great. I love that plan.
All right. Check.
Okay, so, so me and Jason, question mark, are the.
Probable.
Yeah.
And then we'll see that first meeting, and.
Yeah.
So I'll work on that side with when and whatnot. That's fair. Okay.
Okay.
And moving on to the next item, actually, Mr. Provinz and Ms. Sullivan, I will invite you, if you want to take one of the empty seats up here for these discussions, since, since you will both be impacted by any of the decisions made during this discussion.
Yeah, I can move this over here, so.
I do have.
Can we say welcome to our council members elect, Mr. Provinz and Ms. Sullivan?
And next time you sit up here, you'll have your own microphone, we swear.
I don't mind sharing that.
You won't have to.
I mean, is that true?
I think so, there used to be, no, yes, he'll have his own, it'll just be this one. You want to share.
You want to come back as a candidate.
You can sit out, you can sit out there.
Yeah, I think that microphone.
I will, I will give you the form to complete, if you would like to address council.
10 minutes before start, right?
10 minutes before start.
10 minutes before start, yes. All right. So 2026, 27 council committee assignments. I guess we'll get the two easy ones out of the way first. President pro tem and clerk pro tem. Anyone interested in either? You cannot serve as both.
I can volunteer for clerk pro tem.
All right.
Thank you. I was hoping that might be.
Yeah, that's my lead.
Since you've never missed a meeting, I will gladly step up as president pro tem.
All right.
In the expectation that I never have to, and if I do, I gladly will.
I got clerk pro tem for two terms, and I did have to fill in for Joe twice, for the record, Mr. Gears.
For the record, the one meeting, the first meeting, I was not even aware of, no one notified me.
Excuse us.
How does that happen?
Aren't you the notified?
Aren't you the notified?
Isn't that your role?
Yes, the.
Yes, is a complete sentence, Mr. Gears.
Hey, that's a good precedent, my soul, right there.
No, that was, that was after inauguration, and they called a special meeting. I was not on any of the notifications or communications until Ms. Royce sent me a text or a call and asked if I was coming to the meeting, and I replied back, what meeting?
I think we were starting at that point, so.
Yes. So that was one. I think the other one, I was, I was sick. But no, we have a month left before.
It's very nice, Mrs. Franson, to volunteer, but I do think in the future, if it's someone, because I feel like we usually end up having someone who's not a chair of a committee, I feel like if you're not a chair, it may be fair to be, I didn't mean for that to rhyme, it would be more fair for you to be clerk pro tem, just because it is a little extra work and a little extra time. I didn't have a chair last time, and I felt like that balanced out fairly, just something to consider. But Mrs. Franson was too nice.
I'm sure she will have no issues calling the roll.
It is much more than that, and you know that.
I know how to announce all of your names.
Are you saying that because it's sitting next to me?
Yeah.
All right. Committee of the whole, I'm assuming, obviously, the names, there will be some name changes there. Aside from that, it is all of council. My intention is to keep that, again, as a standing committee. I feel like that worked and was helpful, unless there is any disagreement or discussion on that.
The only discussion I would have is, I think I would like if we could use the committee of the whole for more discussion and planning, and actually, Mr. Provinz and I were talking earlier about if these are the best committees, because we did change them from.
I think they change most terms, they, there's, there are some aspects of them that change.
Yeah, so one of the thoughts was if we could have a communications and/or master plan committee. We have a lot of data that we need to mine through and create some plans, I don't know if we want to do that in committee of the whole, or if that would be its own committee. So I just sort of.
Can I sort of tweak that?
Yeah.
Because I had written down, like, community engagement.
Yeah.
And I feel like survey, master plan is kind of in that bucket, so I don't know if, like, communications and community engagement would go nicely together.
I think that feels fair, when we look at, like, the community conversations that we've been doing, that seems like it would fall underneath of that committee really well. I do think there's a big need for that, and it's a bigger, a bigger project that could use more zeroed-in focus than we can offer a committee of the whole, I think.
Yeah, I third, fourth that. I think some level of communication and, like, technology sort of thing, I hear you on not being able to control your website, but if we could build a website for city council, or the city council, right, so we could have our own committee that works on the communications piece, putting out information on some sort of website media, make sure things are uploaded and available for residents.
And we do have, I know that Mr. Gears was working with Mr. Powers to create a council page within our website, and I think that that's just a longer process, but we do have that capacity to do that.
A committee that could see that and, like, jobs.
Maybe like a, what'd be called, like, communications and planning type of committee?
I feel like planning is so broad.
So I would suggest that we actually put the strategy and planning in the committee of the whole, because we're all here, more minds, better. And then we have, like, a separate one that just oversees the communication, community engagement, and our tech piece, and have that committee just focused in on how are we putting what we do here out, so that people can engage.
Like, communication and outreach.
Yeah.
As an over, overdefining title.
And then have strategic plan under committee of the whole.
And how you communicate that would be under the communications part, but we don't all be here, everyone who was on that committee would be at the committee of the whole anyway, so it wouldn't be double-dipping.
We call it ECO, Engagement, Communication, and Outreach. How about that?
Wow, that's why we keep you around.
That's why we keep you around. It's the acronyms and the puns and the minds. That's true.
Right.
I think that makes sense. Might be good. Maybe we can go through the current committees first and kind of talk through our current engagements and then figure out if we, if assuming we want to keep it relatively equal, who would fit best with communications after we've kind of filled in the gaps that are currently existing? Does that sound like a plan?
Yeah, and just to be clear, the, the goal or the, the outcome is not to finalize everything with committee assignments or standing rules of council tonight. I mean, just throwing, throwing that out there now to at least get, kind of get the ball rolling, getting the, the conversation out there. I did receive a text regarding some ideas and or suggestions for the rules. We can get to that on the next agenda item. But as far as the, the committees, we have one, two, three. Currently, we have five. I mean, if we wanted to break it down to where I guess it depends on how many meetings you all are interested in attending and how many committees you are interested in serving on. Because obviously, the more committees that are out there, if we look at four members, it does make it easier logistically if we have four members. Just that way, if two members are present somewhere, it is not considered a, does not consider a quorum. The flip side to that is if you only have two members show up at one of your committee meetings, that also does not constitute a quorum, so you do need that third person there in order to constitute having, having that meeting to report out to the, back to council.
I think having four people provides flexibility. I think that's more important than reducing the number of committee assignments.
It is also helpful when committees have standing meetings, because it helps with scheduling situations. And so my goal for next term is also just to establish standing meetings for as many committees as possible. I know, I mean, everyone knows my work schedule is insane and unpredictable. Mr. Provins, I know your work schedule is a little different than most people's nine to five. So I think it's important to like factor in what you can commit to based on that. So like, I know that my limit is three committees. I could not be on more than three committees. My time is very strange. I think this is an important committee to add, though, so I think it's worth the addition. And I agree, I think four people is ideal. It gives us some flexibility without.
Sometimes people get sick last minute and you can still do your committee meeting if one person's sick. It's not the end of the world. You don't have to reschedule stuff.
Same to your point. You all, I'm the new kid on the block. What's the cadence of each of these?
That's a great question and there's not a regular answer. Each committee is different.
Right, so if we could somehow lean on your guys' experience and say, hey, this one's only going to meet quarterly or bi-monthly or whatever it may be, that may reduce the amount of, like, okay, I'll sign up for more committees if I know, okay, I'm going to meet once a month with this, but then this one's bi-monthly.
Yeah.
So this is sort of a version of what Jason's saying, but something I had written down separately, was like, do we basically, do we basically anchor them? So like, the same way that we know right now, second and fourth Tuesdays are council meetings, do we just say, I'm making this up, for example, do we say that also on the second Tuesday is finance? And just every month, we know second Tuesday is finance preceding the main council meeting. And, and similarly, you could sort of do that where we know that basically every Tuesday maybe has like, you know, an opening act and then, you know, the headliner. And then for the ones that are more infrequent, and in my estimation, I was thinking maybe law and ordinance would fall into this one, we just say, hey, any case where we have a fifth Tuesday, law and ordinance gets slotted in there in terms of just like predictable.
We sort of meet, law and ordinance kind of meets a lot.
All right, well, then law and ordinance is a bad example, but just whichever one is, you know, maybe most infrequent, we would put on like fifth Tuesday as.
And I also think having meetings anchored and scheduled regularly will allow for some committees to meet less frequently because we know, okay, we've got an issue we're talking about this week, but in three weeks, this committee's already meeting. So we're going to put that, we're going to schedule that for that committee meeting in three weeks and not feel that there is like an urgency that we have to meet and address this one thing right now. There is, our mayor's court exists on Tuesdays, like one day a month or something? I'm not making that up.
I don't remember what. It's earlier today.
Yeah, it's pretty early.
I know, we've run into that before where we've tried to schedule. And an important thing to note about council committees as well, if something else is happening, you don't have to meet in council chambers. Committee can meet anywhere as long as, well, not everywhere, but most places. We can use other spaces in city hall, so it doesn't have to be, if something is already scheduled in council chambers, it doesn't mean we can't have committee.
Yeah, well, and I think the, the other thing I just want to say about this is that I think in terms of like community connectivity and giving people like more opportunity to like engage with the thing they care about. If I know that the third Tuesday at 6:30 is going to be Parks Committee every month, I can just sort of slot that in my calendar and be like, all right, I really care about the parks. I'm going to show up, just block that time in a way that right now, I think that because it's so ad hoc, it makes it hard for an engaged resident to like really pinpoint and stick with it with any of these, which kind of loses that, that community willpower that we might otherwise tap into with more consistency.
My, my recommendation on that would be to err on the side of scheduling them more frequently with the understanding that it's easier to cancel than it is to necessarily get that meeting together. And I'll use committee of the whole as an example. You know, there are, it is easier to remove it from the city website than it is to make sure there are enough people available to actually have the meeting as opposed to just keeping it, we keep it scheduled. Law and ordinance, oh, bad example. I can't use finance either because I know that one. Small business, let's say small business, maybe they really meet, they only meet every other month. Because prior to that, maybe there are not as many items placed into that committee. So that, that's another thing, is if there is nothing in committee, is there a need for the meeting to take place? Where you may cancel every other meeting, or if there is nothing in that committee, you just continue to cancel those until a matter is placed into that committee for discussion. So I would almost err on the side of setting that schedule, the standing committee meeting schedule for each committee, and then canceling when there is nothing, there's nothing in committee. That way, during new business or unfinished business, we're not bouncing off of each other to figure out who can make next Thursday at seven versus the following Wednesday at 6:30.
Also, I felt like that was more convenient than, or I feel like last time we were emailing, I felt like doing it during council was much faster.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Other committees. I'm sure not for you. For the folks at home, this is better for us.
Just in the interest of time, because I know Ms. Sullivan has to leave in about 15 minutes, I want to make sure she gets to talk about committee placements and opinions on that. What a good way to move forward with that for, be for chairs after they are appointed at our first council meeting to come to the first committee of the whole meeting with a proposed frequency and we can iron out standing meetings. That work for everybody?
Yeah, I think that'd be good, because I'll, I'll know my schedule better.
Yeah, and we'll know exactly who ends up on what committee and what works for them.
Calendar, I'm like, yeah, this is the holiday season. This is not a good time to look at what my normal schedule is.
And I don't know that it'll necessarily be the first Tuesday. I don't know if we want to go that soon after.
Oh, yeah, because that's probably like.
I know, what day's the first?
Right, well, we can.
Do we want to just go ahead and figure out who's interested in what committees?
I think we should talk about that and then chairs can figure out frequency.
Well, talking about what the committees are. We want to change the names because that then goes into the rules of council. The committee names would go in there, the name of the committee as well as the number of members.
So should we just start with the next law ordinance, human resource and compliance? How do we feel about that committee? Who enjoys it?
I hope everyone enjoys it.
Oh, I enjoy it a lot. I would like to stay on that committee. I really do enjoy that committee. I do feel like compliance and human resources, we like, in my experience, have not dealt with at all. I think if we feel like it's important to have those covered in a committee, we can leave it there, but in my time on that committee, we have not really touched those.
We all do just refer to it as law.
We do.
However, you all.
I mean, we can, we can scratch.
Because when I think of human resources, I usually think of budget. And so I wonder if that topic fits more with finance.
And any really, like, a lot of that gets discussed at council proper because it has to. So a lot of that, we really can't even, because we have to be an executive session, for a lot of it, we can't talk about it at committee without being an executive session. So I, yeah, I would feel more comfortable with that committee just being law and ordinance, which is really functionally what we use it as anyway.
All right.
Could I add to that conversation?
Yes, you can.
I would be interested in maybe merging economic development with law and ordinance, small business and economic development. We haven't met since April.
Yeah, we've not had a meeting in a long time.
I respectfully don't like that idea because what I would love to see is economic development really take the lead on its CRAs and the TIPS. And so I'm picturing that becoming a pretty big task, especially with all the development that we've got rolling in. And so for me, that would feel divergent, like that, that doesn't really fit as well.
I think it would be better if we, if we do take a bigger role in doing more CRA, TIF, PUD zoning stuff. And if we start having a standing meeting, then I think it will become a more versatile and more relevant committee. Like, yeah, but as it is now, yeah, we haven't met for quite a while, but.
Yeah, we haven't had an issue.
But if we start making things our issue.
Yes. My thought about small business, too, is, is taking a more active role in the CRA and TIF discussions earlier in the conversation and having that, having those conversations start in that committee. We have not met since April because we haven't had a topic in committee since April. Like, things specific to small business don't come up super often in council, so since food truck ordinances, we have not really had a, a topic that has been placed in committee. But I think putting CRAs and TIPS will require those standing meetings more often. I feel like those are more economic development than impacting one specific small business.
Can I, can I throw out maybe like a quirky, because I think like to life, like, how do we grow small business, locally, independent, owned, support, like those kinds of things? Those almost just feel like two, like totally separate games in a way that I almost like, and maybe I'm just, I still have like Catherine Fitzgerald in my head from a meeting with her of like, you know, small businesses, I'm thinking about on like Williams Ave. She's like, she's like, quite frankly, those are like quality of life businesses. Those aren't like economic development businesses. In the same way that like, like, like public places or parks or things are like quality of life kinds of, you know, I mean, it's almost like, the bucket that's forming in my head is, is almost like, let's call it like resident amenity, like third spaces, like it's, it's kind of in that vein more than it is like giant 10 acre, what's going to happen at Norwood Plaza? Like, it just feels like a, I don't know, sort of its own category of stuff. Maybe that's a bad idea, I don't know, I just want to say it out loud in case it like resonated with anybody else.
I have also maybe a bad idea. Thinking, phrasing it that way makes me think that perhaps, because the reason that something has not been placed in small business committee for so long is because the legislation that comes before us is often not specific and nailed down enough that it, it impacts just small business or just one business or something like that. Is there a world where it makes more sense for small business to exist as an advisory board who is there to instead of focus on legislation, focus on like projects and cooperative efforts with other CDCs and other organizations to help promote small business, to help fill empty spaces, because that is not necessarily under our purview as council? Does that make more sense so that we can bring in someone from a different organization, someone from the community? Like, that seems like a, maybe would be better serving actual small businesses than a specific council committee. Does that make sense? I feel like there would be more freedom to move and more time and energy to take on projects that are outside of legislation if there were folks outside of council also involved in that conversation.
So maybe what we do with that, this is me thinking out loud, is we adopt something similar to DEI board.
That's what I was thinking.
Where council has a resolution, work with the law department, identify membership. I would imagine you probably want to work with the administration because they would have, Mayor Schneider would either sign off or have the option to veto said resolution. And I would imagine we probably want one or two members of the administration to serve on that board as well. So in that regard, I think council could look at it as, as a board, an independent board that consists of, I mean, you can make whoever, whatever membership you would like as far as requiring a certain number of council members on there, members of the administration, members of either the chamber, residents at large or local businesses.
I'm just not interested in adding more committees, more boards. We're already talking about adding one without cutting it. I would assume it would just be easier to merge it into, to another one. The food truck ordinance could have easily just gone to law and ordinance committee as well. So I, I think there's room for small business inside, inside another committee. I mean, it could stay inside economic development without adding to the work.
I guess my thought is then that committee would no longer exist and economic development could move into a different, maybe that, I, I don't, I don't.
Almost trying to like uncouple them, like, and then.
If we want to slot economic development into law and ordinance or something, and then small business becomes a board that is separate, we are not increasing the numbers of anything, nor are we increasing a requirement on council. Much like the DNI board, it is voluntary, it is not required for anyone from council to participate. And, and my point about that is not necessarily so much that it's like lightening the load of anyone on council and more so that there is more freedom to move and freedom to act when it is not a committee. Because we are limited by what we are allowed to do legally and an advisory board is not, well, they are, but differently. Those are folks who, I mean, that would be comprised of people who are, are already committing less time to committees, are constrained less by quorum and by, you know, it has to be legislative action. So I think there is a world where small business economic development as a committee does not exist any longer. Economic development moves into another existing committee and small business becomes an advisory board.
I'm okay with that. I thought the argument was to keep economic development as its own.
And do the advisory board.
Yeah, I think we were maybe having two different thoughts going on at the same time. But I think Sam's idea makes sense to me. That would keep everything kind of the same, still have, cover everything depending on.
So where would economic development be? Like, where would we have?
I weirdly think there's an argument for any of the committees, which is strange.
Even like the food truck ordinance could have gone to health and public safety.
Sure.
Like the things that, there's a lot of overlap in these.
It's like housing, it almost kind of comes to mind for me, too, in the sense that like some of these, some of the biggest, kind of like economic development things.
But, but once they're a certain size, they're not housing, then they're, they're commercial development. And I think for me, one of the things I'm wanting to capture is like with factory 52, the fact that people felt like they were so behind in, in getting information about it, that if we had them going through that committee beforehand, then we would have had lots of meetings and conversations. And where would that land? Right, so right now, it doesn't really exist.
Is that a communications?
So when, when you say that and kind of what's blowing around in my mind is why is that not infrastructure? In, in a broader sense, like, this is our city, right? And so where we put businesses and do development economically would be an infrastructure piece, much like where do we put roads?
I mean, physical development does feel like an infrastructure.
I feel like the infrastructure is too big a committee as it is. Infrastructure and parks, I feel like that's.
I also feel like finance makes a lot of sense, but finance is way too. But I also feel like finance makes a lot of sense, but finance is way too, their burden is too heavy as it stands.
I think you could just take economic development as it comes, do it. I think like it could fall into other committees, depending on what kind of project it is or what, what needs to be, what aspect is of a concern at that point.
Well, see, and that's what I don't want to do, is wait until it's like, oh, okay, now it's happening, where do we want to put it?
I think it happens regardless.
Well, it didn't used to. In, in Norwood, which is interesting, but there, it used to be, I don't know, like 10 years ago, like all development went through, right?
We automated CRAs. Like, CRAs used to come through economic development whenever I first was on that committee.
Yeah. So I don't, I, that's what I'm trying to get back to. So it's, so we're proactive. So like, for example, right now, we've got the quality insight that's going to be coming, you're going to be digging dirt, I think on the 17th. None of us have really seen much about that except a couple of pages of information on it.
You have them do a presentation at House.
Oh, yeah.
They did a PowerPoint.
They did a PowerPoint.
And actually, with the other Factory 52 development, they also presented that at Housing previous, too. I mean, they hadn't been a part of that planning.
And I, that was because we didn't have anywhere else to put it. So I invited them to come to House, yeah.
So can I ask a question about, if you take out housing, excuse me, if you take away housing and just think about like health, environment, public safety, like how often does that, how often does that do stuff?
Legislatively?
Like, if you, if you take out the housing component, just health, environment, public safety?
I, I would say legislatively, not very often. There's a lot of things happening in that category in terms of recycling stuff.
We actually, he had us, yeah, Mrs. Winnebauer talked about lead, actually, because that was brought up tonight. She actually did a big thing about lead and awareness and what to do.
And we had a program.
Yeah.
Yeah, and she held a program at the Live.
I see, for, for the Department of Health.
So we, so again, not legislatively, but a lot of activities happen in that, under that umbrella.
Do we feel like we need that to be under a committee for those activities to take place? Or could those be like just individual council people want to work with the Board of Health to?
I thought it was good. I know, I think it's good.
That's a great point. And one of the things I was thinking about as we were going into this meeting is like, I feel like this pressure to get these committees at the start because we're stuck with them. So I would actually like to propose that we develop an ad hoc committee that allows us, as the needs of the city change, to stand it up and say, hey, we need to revisit these committees because they're not meeting the needs of what's going on and what we're hearing. And then we can actually say, hey, we decided, you know, January 1 or whenever we decided that we weren't going to have an economic development committee. Well, economic development has changed since we made that decision. It's now a year later, let's stand up our ad hoc committee and say, we need an economic development committee to start doing this work, but it's been really slow in finance. I know that's not going to happen, I'm just taking you as an example, we're going to cut that one. So I would recommend that we develop this kind of body where we can evaluate the rules and the committees and allow us to change them as the needs of this, because two years is a long time. I mean, I'm just thinking about next month and how much my life is going to change. Give us a little bit more flexibility so that we, we can try out some committee structure, kind of get a feedback loop with it in three months, and then if we need to, we have that option to say, we need to revisit this.
Joe, do you know if that's like legally doable? Or can you look into if that's legally doable?
To, to redo the committees after?
Or to like have an ad hoc committee that?
I'll, I'll double check. I think we have to have the committee, the committees in place. That's part of the reason, I mean, that's, that's one of the items of business, that's why we have that special meeting on January 1st, is to put those in place as well as rules of council.
In theory, we could change the rules of council anytime by ordinance.
Well, not by ordinance, it would have to go into the law and ordinance committee for discussion. So, yeah, I, I don't remember what the timing is, but yeah, to make a change to the standing rules of council, proposed amendments to these rules shall be offered in writing at a regular meeting of council, shall be referred to the committee of law and ordinance, shall not be reported out of the committee until the next regular council meeting. So.
In terms of finding, we've like, we're being very tangential, which is in our nature. In terms of finding a place for economic development, if that's the way we want to move forward, especially because the goal for that is to be more engaged earlier on in the conversations about CRAs and TIFs, would it make sense to have all of the CRA and TIF conversations default to committee of the whole? Because of how far reaching and engaging they are, would it make sense to just default those into the monthly committee of the whole conversation and then everyone can partake in those conversations?
I mean, I'm not opposed to that.
That's a good point, Sam, because that would kind of fit in what we talked about, about adding strategy to the committee at whole.
I kind of like that idea. Well, it was my idea.
I asked about it, but it sounds good to me.
I'm not noting that in there.
You don't have to put that in the minutes.
I think that makes sense. I know to defer to Ms. Sullivan's schedule, it might be good just to get her input about what she is interested in and Mr. Problem, I don't know if you're so limited by time as well.
I may fall asleep on you, but I think.
Okay, but I know you have to leave and you're not, you're not required to be here. So what, is there's things that you are most interested in?
Or definitely, or definitely don't want.
Or definitely, yeah, definitely don't want.
Right, that is fair, all right. So although importance, I do not think that my best place is in finance and budgeting. I took, you know, in the grand scheme of things, an easy math class during college, so I don't know if that's my strong suit. I would be really interested in infrastructure, streets, parks, recreation, and public places, as well as housing, health, environment, and public safety. I think those are my top two. Yeah.
What about communication?
Communication, I would love if that is something that could be manifested.
The eco.
The eco, as we're calling it now. Many people are saying.
I will say Danielle would slot right into housing because there would be an open, well, actually, two open spots. I am more interested in communication than I am, not that I haven't loved my time, Emily, but I think I could be more impactful on communication than on infrastructure. So I, that would also be a swap I would be willing to make. Though there's also a spot open on.
Danielle, just real quick, on the infrastructure piece, because of what I'm going to say right after this, what, what part of infrastructure is most interesting to you?
I think public places, parks, recreation, probably the big three out of four, with all four being my interests. I think those would be like the top three, probably public places and recreation, putting for top space. Yes.
You've, yeah, you answered my question.
Okay.
Because to sort of, or do you have anything else, Ms. Sullivan, that you want to share?
I think that's about it. I would be ridiculously interested in communication if that is something that we're concerned.
Got it, thank you. So I, I think, just to take one more sort of pass back at, at reshuffling the deck, because I almost, like, if I think about infrastructure, and I almost were to call that like built environment, and think about like housing, streets, and like big economic development projects, like those, those sort of built environment components all go together in a way, in my brain anyway, that would then create what I'll call almost like a third places committee, which would be like parks and small businesses and public places and recreation, in terms of like where do you hang out when you're not at work and when you're not at your house? So like, again, sort of thematically in my brain, like, small businesses, if I think about just like my, like my experience in Ward 2, right? I think about like birdies in the same way that I think about Burrwood Park in the same way that I think about like Wassam Way. You know, they're all just kind of like places to hang out, in the sense that like, if I think about like the built environment of like streets, how, big housing developments, big economic development projects, like those are sort of the physical environment, like changing the face of the physical environment. So I don't, we don't, obviously I have to do that, but that's like a grouping in my mind that would kind of make sense in a different way.
So I kind of did something similar, I'll explain my diagram here.
Oh, my God.
Thank you, John Madden.
That is what that looked like.
But looking at, I know there was discussion about law and ordinance, do we just keep that alone? If, and this can get shot down, but law ordinance, I was going to put public safety in with that, as well as environment. So we put.
I don't think that's a bad idea, because we talked about like lighting and.
And I think we talked about the gun.
Yeah.
What is the word I'm looking for? Disposal? But we talked about, I, I think that often topics that fall under public safety end up in law and ordinance anyway.
So that, that was one. So law, ordinance, environment, and public safety. Keeping, so pulling the word infrastructure out and keeping a separate parks, recreation, and public places. Lumping streets in together with housing and health.
Streets, housing, and health?
It's, it's because it's S H A.
I wasn't thinking that.
Sorry, that was.
Government is so thrilling.
I'm just trying to keep them straight in my mind. So housing, you know, made me forget. Housing, streets, housing, and health.
That way, we, we kind of pull the, we split infrastructure. We keep parks, recreation, and public places its own committee. Pull streets away from that and put that together with, well.
What's health, though?
I mean, technically, you could throw that in with environment and public safety, with law and ordinance, and just have.
So you're just like, housing and streets?
I mean, what's health now?
That's what I'm like, what, what health issues have we had? When I think of them, that's been led, which was public safety, would health be?
I've had like concerned tenants reach out because of like, I've had to like, I was on a vacation and actually had to, but had, like, I had someone reach out because they wanted to get in touch with the health department for a landlord concern, and they found me through the housing, health, and public safety. But.
I mean.
However, I think maybe having, I don't know, I guess public safety and health are kind of the same thing, but that's where it fell together, I'll just say it. Like, I, like, for an example, I had like.
Right.
Because it was housing.
You're saying housing and health go together because the health department is essentially enforcement when there's like housing issues of maintenance or trash or whatever.
Could impact people's personal safety and well-being, like, I could see that.
So then that would be different than public safety.
We need a board.
So like health would go under.
I think it could stay with housing.
And gun disposal would go under public.
I also think lead being in that committee makes sense because lead is really an infrastructure issue. Like, lead is actually a sewer issue.
It is a water line issue.
More than it is a.
A soil issue.
Yes.
It is a soil.
It is because of that. So it seems like streets, housing, and health being put together makes sense because they are often intertwined.
Sorry, did Danielle say she wanted to be on housing? Excuse me, Mrs. Housing? Yes, I think that's a good idea, I think, because you'll be the only renter, so.
Yeah.
Like, I don't think anyone besides me was like, well, you have to get the health department if your landlord's crazy. Not that mine ever is, but, yeah. I think it's something people forget once they have their own houses.
Yes.
A love and light, am I, I'm sure you all rent.
So probably basically keep finance as it is.
Yeah, we can't get finance, any more work to do.
Yeah.
Good heavens.
And then that leaves small business and economic development, which you had the idea about.
Moving to a board and moving economic development to default to committee of the whole.
And then having the, the communication, I'm just trying to.
And then we're not adding to anyone's workload unless they volunteer to sit on an advisory board.
So that would, that would keep the same number of committees?
Yes, makes it more manageable. Right now, people default to three committees and chair, most people chair one committee. So also think about if there's a committee you feel comfortable or confident chair, you don't have to, not everyone does, there are not enough committees. But is there something that you feel driven enough to want to chair? You also could like, if there's someone else chairing it right now, that does not mean that you cannot offer.
Yeah, you can, you can do a coup, it's fine.
You could do a coup.
I think it's like beats of strength.
Yeah, I think so. That's how Jeff won.
Yeah, I saw it.
It was horrible, it kind of hurt me. Yeah.
So if we were to go through these sort of shifted, are there folks who, the one thing that I would say is I would like to be with the infrastructure because of my position on OKI. I think that that would be really helpful. I had thought about.
So the streets, right?
Yeah, can we, can we just reestablish, can we just say the five again? I think, so are we agreeing that how Joe just kind of said them is what we're doing?
Infrastructure is housing now. So you would already.
I thought infrastructure.
We're, we're pulling infrastructure from any title.
Because the streets would be on.
So streets, housing, and health is going to be the new.
So.
Oh, this is going to be terrible.
And then environment and public safety are going up to law and ordinance?
Correct.
Yes.
And then where's parks, recreation, and public?
That would still be.
Parks, recreation, and public places would be its own committee.
Streets just divides from.
Oh, no, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And if small business and economic development is going to have those matters placed into committee of the whole, what I would probably ask or request is that we have someone serve as the primary contact for those items that fall into that committee, if that makes sense.
Like a sub-chair?
Yeah.
Yes.
Or whatever you call it.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Would that just be?
How's that different than a?
Could you just let like the clerk in?
Because if Joe is the chair and then if there were once, if, he's saying, can there be someone on committee of the whole who is established as the main point of contact for any incoming TIF, CRAs, that sort of thing?
So he doesn't have to do that.
So like Mr. Skelly and Ms. Fitzgerald and whoever else can, no, I'm going to send all this to this person and it's that person's job to say, okay, this is ready, good, to go into committee.
Got it.
I really have to leave in like 15 minutes.
All right.
Do we want to maybe have a brief meeting before the committee, our council meeting next week?
About rules?
Yeah.
I think it would be wise, too, for folks to take rules home, like read through them, think on them, get familiar with them, and think about any changes you want, because I know not everybody had access to these before right now.
Emily, do you know where else we can find the rules of council?
Wow, did you know that you can find the rules of council on the website? Good luck. Because I text, you can. I believe that you can.
I'm not arguing that it's possible.
If you, if you Google Norwood Council, City of Norwood, it will come up eventually. Not to say, again, not to say that the website is good, but it is on there. Because I texted Joe, hey, what are our committee assignments? I can't find them in my email.
Do you know how I found them?
And it turns out around a little bit.
I've searched the photos in my phone to get a picture of them on inauguration.
Me, too, I took a picture of them on Angela Hayes' computer.
I probably typed in like 20 words into the Google search bar to figure it out, so.
But we made it there. Luckily, we're forming a committee to help with that.
That's going to fix all that.
So, so real quick, just, just to say this back, so we're saying law, ordinance, environment, public safety, finance stays as it is, the third one is parks, rec, and public places, fourth one is small business and economic development?
Nope, nope, that's dead.
Nope, that's gone.
Fourth one is communications and community engagement, right? Is that what we said?
Engagement, yeah, engagement, communication, and outreach.
Small business is going to become a board, hopefully.
Okay, right.
But those matters will be placed in the committee of the whole for everyone to discuss.
And then economic development will go with the committee of the whole. Look at all these.
It'll be streets, yeah, streets, housing, health. Yep, so it's, it's going to be the same.
Number.
Same number of committees.
Yeah, because I think initially we had kind of put infrastructure and parks and stuff together to reduce the number of committees. And then I still think it's good to have the same number roughly to make it more manageable, but I do agree that it makes sense to put it into that kind of built environment, infrastructure, housing, et cetera.
I'm going to come back to my ad hoc idea.
I like that idea, I just want to make sure that it's, I don't know.
Like room to evolve, basically, is what you're after.
Yes, so it would put us all in the same committee instead of it sitting in law and order, or law and ordinance. So we'd all get to consider the changes at the same time, instead of it going through a committee that has four members on it and then rolling up. It would also allow us to assess how we're doing with our rules and the committees.
Can we not, can we not discuss all that in committee of the whole, though? Does it need to be separate from committee of the whole? Can we not, can we not discuss all that in committee of the whole though? Does it need to be separate from committee of the whole?
Absolutely. I'm saying, let's consider, I know we're not gonna talk about the rules until next time, but I'm, they kind of go hand in hand, right? We gotta change the rules to establish committee or put it in a different committee. But I think it needs to be a function of what we do.
Yeah, I think double checking what we're allowed to do legally, we'll have time in the intervening week and we can talk more about it next week with that. I do think it's a good idea to be able to come back and reassess. Hopefully not, you know, continually if we need to, if something's not working. Because like, you had good ideas, but then in reality it didn't work so well, so now you have to figure it out.
When Candace resigned and John was appointed, he, he just like slotted into the committees. But what if he'd started and said, I like hate these committees, I don't want to be on these committees? Then we would have been in a tough place. I think it's a really good idea, but I want to make sure that we're legally-
Allowed to.
Allowed to do that.
So who's gonna take that action for next?
Joe.
Joe's got it.
And then we can discuss it at the next, are we, we're gonna meet before next council, is that the plan?
Meet at 6:30 next Tuesday?
Yeah, we don't have finance committee next Tuesday, so that is the fourth Tuesday, so we should be good on our finance end.
Will that work for council elects? Ooh, you made a face.
That's two, so meets. I already missed one tonight, but we can make it work.
Would a different night, would Wednesday work or do people want to keep it on Tuesday?
It'd probably be easier to be on Tuesday just because we're already kind of scheduled then, but-
I work every Wednesday night.
Yeah, and I know that work schedules are also, yeah. So there's, you can also, Jason, you can also, if you can't-
I'm just gonna put a TV right here and livestream it.
And if you weren't able to attend last minute, you can always communicate to Joe or some, one of us and we can like have your comments in an email. Especially since you're not elected yet, you're more free to talk to people like Joe.
What are they over at that night?
Uh, like 9:30. Yeah, we run, let's see.
Meeting after?
Three, no, first one-
Our meeting will be over at 9:30.
First one starts at 5:00.
Okay.
9:30. We're a swimming family.
I know.
And Tuesday nights are the nights. Yeah.
No meat sports.
Alright, so do we want to talk about-
I was a swim coach, I'm all about it.
So are we gonna, are we gonna at least put names tentatively next to these or is that not happening?
Um, Tuesday or now?
Like right now, are we doing that or no?
We can, especially like, maybe like the committees that are still, that are not really changing too much. So let's say for finance, we can maybe nail down who's gonna be on that right now.
That's an important one.
So I'm good with staying on.
I'm happy to stay on with that one. If somebody wants to be chair, I'm happy to have that conversation.
I'm good, thanks.
Yeah, that was quick, you should have waited.
One thing just to throw out there, a bunch of other communities, everyone attends the finance meeting. Like, not only attends but is a member of because that's sort of our key thing. I'm not, look at your face, I know.
As much as I would, as much as I would love having three mandatory, everybody there, just like in terms of tax on time, feels like a lot.
I think that unless it's, I think it could be, if there's something incredibly important, like maybe we're getting out of fiscal emergency, we could call a special meeting of finance committee and invite everyone explicitly to come. Otherwise, I feel like it's probably okay to just only have the four people and kind of communicate that via the committee reports.
Or similar to what we did with the budget hearing? We can do it in conjunction with committee of the whole and just-
Yeah, there's always that flexibility to call that committee of the whole. So Jeff as chair, me, John.
Yeah, so I think, I think the question is, is there a clear and interested fourth member? I would definitely want to stay on it, it sounds like Emily and Jeff are in the same.
I definitely want to stay on it, but not as chair.
No, thank you.
I'll join.
All right. So it's J names only.
Wow.
I do like-
Unless you're a woman.
And also-
All STEM.
Right, are you all STEM people? Jeff, you're not.
You're all very STEM.
Yeah.
I don't know what your degrees are, John.
Finance.
Science.
Yeah, we're swapping out John Brain for Jason Providence, so the J names continue.
Never mind, it's evenly divided, I just knew Emily was science.
Alright, and then as far as the sort of law ordinance, environment, public safety, Alexis is rolling off that. There's a desire to stay, anybody else want to peel off that?
I really enjoy that committee, I would like to stay on it.
I'd like to stay on it, it's all mine. Environmental stuff, but that's also one that I think Danielle would be really good on.
Would be really interesting.
I'm happy to take on something else, but I'm happy to stay on that one as well.
If Danielle really wants it and you want to go somewhere else, we could just swap you guys out and Jeff could be maybe on communication or-
I don't want to get.
Not that one.
So we're adding Jason and Danielle and we're subbing Alexis and Jeff, is that what we're saying? Alright.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to sub you out if you don't want to.
It's a fun committee.
It is a fun committee.
It's super fun.
I'll do what's good with the order except for going to the communication one, but I, I'm happy to stay or I'm happy to shift and go somewhere else.
So let's say TBD on that one, because we'll also see how all these shake out and then maybe it's like, alright, well-
Somebody's gonna want to do one thing more than they want to do something else.
Alright, streets, housing, and health.
I already volunteered, Dan.
I'm good. I, I can go onto that one. Take the place of-
Two vacancies?
And I'm happy to keep chairing that one.
So Susan, myself, Danielle, and John?
Yeah.
If you're on, I don't know if you were-
I would, I think my answer is yes, but I might flex off that once this shakes out.
Let's say that, if you decide you do not. I will take your spot.
Alright, so this is, sorry, Susan. Danielle.
I have Hoover, Sullivan, Franzen, Moore, question mark.
Okay, Franzen is three and then Moore slash Bowing, okay.
Parks, recreation, and public places.
I can keep chairing that.
You do a really good job.
And now it'll be easier to not also have streets and all the infrastructure in the city, that turns out. You wanna, you wanna share?
I wanna, I'm feeling torn because I just want to say yes to all these, is what I'm running into.
Because we have, Sam, you kind of wanted to step off this one.
I don't, it's not that I want to step off, it's just that if there's, if there's not room for someone and they want to, I'm, I, I, listen, I like all the committees I'm on. If I am looking at my three, I would very much like to be on communications and I'm happy to chair communications, especially since the committee that I am chairing currently is dead. And if I am sitting on law and ordinance, then I would either end up on housing if that is one that John decides he doesn't like, or I am happy to stay on parks.
Okay.
I'm happy with either one of those as my third.
But you want, you want the engagement, communication, and outreach?
I think so.
Alright.
I feel like Jeff took some initiative with parks this year.
I mean, I can take something with that one.
If Sam wanted to get off, to go on to park.
I would not be angry to not chair this term, but if I need to, that would be the committee I would want to chair would be communications. But if-
If you would love to chair, I'm happy to not.
No, 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 for parks, sorry. There's no world where I'm chairing that.
I would also be interested in parks with some of the, like, the Marsh Park work and some of the rest of-
Danielle, were you also?
I am, I have a question.
Alright.
Are we only allowed to be on three?
No, no.
Okay.
Then I would be on-
Probably not.
On many, as many as you want. And, yeah, and in some cases, like, some people are much busier than others, so maybe some people only have two and other people have four. It's just, in the past, we've tried to make it as equal as possible to spread the load. But there's no rule that says it has to happen.
Alright.
So are we full on parks?
Well, I don't even know.
I have Franzen, Garten, Hoover, Sullivan, is that?
Do you want to sit on-
Or John? Or John?
Yeah, I mean, does it-
This is a hot ticket.
I know, you guys may be. They, they ready for this one.
Well, and I mean, is there a reason that we can't just have five too?
Yes. It changes your more on the-
Sorry, I just suggested Jeff because you got off of one. That was me.
Because three is the quorum either way.
Ignore me.
You're not even on this.
I am volunteering, people where to go.
Quorum would be three either way for a committee of four or a committee of five, right?
Correct.
So you could put a fifth person on this committee and it wouldn't impact anything?
I don't need to be on this.
We'll put a fifth person on it.
A little dangerous.
More than Mary.
Yeah.
Unless that impacts quorum for other committees.
Oh, yeah, I guess it kind of could, yeah, that could.
Yeah.
You had two, if you had-
It could overlap.
If there were too many people on that committee who were also on other committees.
Three that were on the same committee.
That could, if three of the people of the five at the parks were also on other committees, then you would have quorum from a different committee at every committee meeting there and that would be illegal. Isn't that fun? Don't we love that?
I want to stay on parks.
So, did you have an interview?
So, let's say, John, myself, Danielle, and Susan.
Alright.
Correct. What about Jason?
I'm okay with not parks.
Okay.
I don't want to bust quorum and, yeah.
What are you, what is your, where do you want to be?
Right now I have you chairing law, ordinance, environment, and public safety and on finance.
And what do we need?
One more.
We have one more.
You don't have to be on one more, but if you would like to be on-
No, I mean, like, what committees do we need people on?
Right now I only have one on the engagement, communication, and outreach.
Well, you have Danielle and Sam.
Alright.
You have two.
So there's two spots open on that one. There's one spot open on that one.
Yeah. So John and Jason could both be-
Are you interested in that committee?
John, Jason, Danielle, Sam could be the communication.
But that takes care of that one.
Put Jason on the committee. There we go. Okay, then I think we're, we have a good idea of where we're starting at least.
And we can, we can kind of flesh it out a little bit more and-
Make sure that everyone feels good about where they are and that we haven't forgotten anyone.
I keep like looking at Alexis like, but what about Alexis? It doesn't matter. Don't beat here.
So if I stay on law and ordinance, if that's possible, and then finance, where's my third?
I have Jeff.
I mean, I shouldn't ask.
You shouldn't.
Yeah, you're chairing finance.
Committee of the whole, Jeff?
I don't want Jeff to feel left out.
Yeah. I, I think because Danielle kind of volunteered for four, she took eight.
Did we get two for housing since?
Oh, if, if I'm taking up a spot from something, again.
You're fine.
No, we can-
Housing, the streets, housing, and health, Susan, Emily.
Oh, Emily. Right.
Yeah.
I have Danielle and John with a question.
Possibly John, yes, right.
Not Sam with, got rid of Sam?
Only if John did not want to, but I think John wants to.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know.
We're all being too polite to each other, we need to be more cutthroat.
Yeah. We also, this is not, we do not, we cannot make any final decisions here tonight anyway. So like, we're not about to have this 100%. If y'all want to go home and think about your committee placements and-
Yeah, we have time next week too.
Tag them up and make sure that we have one for every-
I'm not putting the committee assignment piece in the minutes.
Great.
Just that it was discussed.
I'm gonna make a little chart, I'm gonna make a little spreadsheet.
Make a little chart.
Yeah, it would be good to share, just to keep it, so we all have the same information for next week. And then after we slept on it, we'd be like, eh, I don't really actually care that much about this one, or no, I do actually want to be on this one, so.
Alright, so just, just so that I have this right, okay? Pay attention, get your bingo cards. Law, ordinance, environment, public safety, Jason, Sam, Danielle, Susan. Correct? Alright, finance, John, Jason, Emily, Jeff. Good? Parks, recreation, public places, Emily, Susan, Danielle, John. Small business and economic development are going into committee of the whole. Streets, housing, health is Susan, Danielle, Emily, John, or Sam. And then communication, community engagement, John, Jason, Sam, Danielle.
That sounds good.
Yep.
Alright, I will make up a little chart so we can visually see this more easily.
Yeah, committee of the whole would also have strategic planning or some, somebody had a really good word.
Jeff, is that you on one?
I'm on finance and law and ordinance.
I just, I said Jason, Sam, Danielle, Susan was who I said for-
Oh, then yeah, then I'm only on one.
Oh, wait, oh, you, I think you said like, oh, I can step back and then we never had you step forward for a different committee. Oh, gosh, okay.
I have you on law and ordinance.
So we're struggling with this.
This is like, we're just gonna do this in circles, can we have a visual?
Little visual chart, we'll get a little visual and come back and, because it's not set, right?
No, we can't set it.
Maybe get some sleep and refresh.
Yeah.
Doesn't get voted on until January.
Make sure Jeff is included in not just finance committee, because I thought you were on another one at least.
He was on law and ordinance.
Law and ordinance, yeah.
This, this turn?
And small business.
Oh, no, I know, but like, while we were talking, I thought you were like, oh, yeah, we'll be on this one and then it didn't happen.
Yeah, my name was written after parks.
Yeah, we just don't want, sorry. No, I'm kidding, this is a joke, please.
That I'll add in the minutes.
You are on camera and on record.
This is a joke, please, don't-
And serious.
Please do not clip this and put it on TikTok.
Tom, will you come up with a visual and tally how many everybody has?
6:30, yes, I will do this when I go home.
Great. Do we have anything else? Can we adjourn?
And then 6:30 on Tuesday the night.
6:30 on Tuesday the night.
And so the quorum issue, if there is a instance where I see a committee that won't make another quorum for another committee, I could sit as a fifth?
If it means that you're not, yeah, establishing quorum for a different committee, then yes.
We can take a look at it.
Yeah, the only barrier for the fifth member is that it could violate quorum for a different committee.
The other thing that technically becomes an issue is if those three members are out somewhere and discussing an item, then-
Don't do that.
Because right now you can have three people.
Very good at not doing that.
We are all hyper aware of that.
Very, very aware of that.
When a neighboring city council all gets arrested, it brings it to the front of your attention.
Yeah.
Joe, Matt, just another question, I know Susan mentioned OKI, are there other, let's say, places where we have a delegate and we have to decide who that delegate is gonna be to that other place?
There's an energy board, right, or there was, that Emily's on.
ESED, yes.
Energy co-op.
And those don't come up like same first, those are on like their own schedule, right?
Yeah, so we just have a yearly meeting for that, maybe more if anyone else applies, which if you know any developments that want to do special improvements.
We don't have to have those decided by Jason.
Please tell them we have that.
And not officially, but the chamber, I don't think it's official, but.
I think that's more just, if you are able to go, well, I guess it'd be good to have someone to have. Yeah.
Well, now I don't know what that committee would be. We'll figure that out. Because I would just have a small business could go, but. No, that doesn't exist.
So we'll finish this discussion next week?
Yep, 6:30.
Great, sweet.
We'll have the announcement go out and the agenda will consist of the committees and standard rules. Because the other items, we will, I'll have that report typed up to report out. And the other one, we will not, we won't have this, we will not have this report out at the next council meeting. It'll be the second one, which, I know someone asked if we are actually having a council meeting on Christmas Eve eve. And yes, unless council wants to reschedule that one, we are slated to have our last council meeting of the year on December the 23rd, because that is the second Tuesday of, oh, no, sorry, the fourth Tuesday of March.
I would be here.
No emergency, right?
Yeah, most folks are going-
As long as we have, as long as we have a quorum, or, well, not just a quorum, but if there are any appropriations ordinances that we have, yes, we're gonna have to have six there to suspend the rules. Otherwise, then we would look at requiring special meetings probably the 29th, 30th, and/or 31st, because we would have to have those prior.
So everyone should be here on the 20th.
Yes.
I will definitely be here on the 23rd.
That would be nice.
I will be here.
Yeah, I'm not traveling.
Barring the poster.
We're good.
So any, anything else, any other items? Okay, then this committee of the whole meeting is hereby adjourned, thank you.